Good afternoon, Santa Monica. Welcome to the, um, so I need everyone to mute. Let's start with that. And welcome to the March 13th meeting of the Santa Monica City Council. And yet another day in paradise. Look out your window, it's beautiful here. Um, so let's call the roll, please.
Councilmember De La Torre is not here yet. Councilmember Brock.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim McCowen.
Present.
Councilmember McKeon.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Para.
Here.
And Mayor Himmelrich.
Here. Um, and just to start the meeting, we're going to do a little agenda management so that we can put the 13 item, which does allow for public input at the beginning of the meeting, so that after public input on item 8A, the staff who is handling our public input can go out and enjoy this glorious day. So may I have a motion to move item 13A to the beginning of the meeting?
So moved.
I think it was Councilmember McCowen, seconded by Councilmember Davis. May we have a roll call, any discussion? May we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Para.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Councilmember McKeon.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim McCowen.
Yes.
Councilmember Brock.
Yes.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, and Mayor Himmelrich.
Yes, and call me whatever you want. That passed unanimously, motion by McCowen made by Davis. So who of the three presenters want to present item 13A?
Well, Mayor, let me read the title.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Request of Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim McCowen and Councilmembers Davis and McKeon that council adopt the attached resolution calling on the Joint Legislative Audit Committee to conduct a thorough investigation and audit of the Metropolitan Water District of Southern California's personnel practices and policies in light of the recent reports concerning the alleged mistreatment of female and LGBTQ staff. And at this point, we have no callers.
I'm happy to, to intro it and then I'm sure Councilmember McKeon and Councilmember Davis would like to say something. So we've all had the opportunity to read up on the allegations of mistreatment of personnel at Metropolitan Water Department of Southern California. I felt, and I know my colleagues did as well, that we on the Santa Monica City Council as recipients of MWD Water had a responsibility to make clear what our values are. This recent crisis makes me even more grateful to prior council members Mike Feinstein, Perry O'Day, Assemblymember Richard Bloom, and our current council colleague, Councilmember Kevin McKeon, for the work they've done over the years to move us toward water self-sufficiency. Judy Abdo was also on the front lines getting us to where we are today in our significantly more limited dependency on MWD Water, and she has done a remarkable job representing our city on the Board of MWD, not only as a Santa Monica advocate, but also as a critical voice throughout this process, fighting to ensure that the internal investigation is transparent and thorough. We echo Judy's strong commitment to fighting for women's rights and LGBTQ rights, and that is why we're calling on the Joint Legislative Audit Committee of the State of California to approve an audit of all personnel policies and practices of the MWD of Southern California.
Councilmember McKeon.
Yeah, just want to follow that up for you. This is the focus of women for investigating the allegations that we've all read about in LA Times. We attached that news story to the agenda packet for this week, and that our focus is in particular those allegations. There have been other things that have come up that people have spoken about locally at the Santa Monica Democratic Club meeting this week. They are not covered in this. We have no knowledge of some of the other stuff that people were talking about, but that council will protect women's rights and that's what this will do.
Councilmember Davis.
Yeah, and I just want to add that I think it's important to set a good example, and the MWD needs to do that, that when these kinds of allegations come forward, that there be a full and fair investigation, and that's really what we're asking for here. It's not enough to simply hear one side of the story or the other. What's important is that every allegation be taken seriously and that every allegation be investigated.
Would anyone else like to comment on item 13A? Councilmember De La Torre.
Yes, when the allegations surfaced, I was really concerned, and I know that, you know, I talked to, you know, people in the community who were also just very outraged hearing those allegations, and I think this is the appropriate action. I think it's real important for us to say beyond just investigation is that we stand completely against any type of discrimination against any group in our society. So I think it's real important and it's very prudent for us to support this.
Thank you. Any other time.
Sorry, but Mayor, we do have a caller for this item that just came in.
Um, okay, well, we will, uh, we will hear the caller.
Transferring Alan Shanahan.
Alan Shanahan, welcome to the meeting. Your time starts now.
Great, thank you very much, Chair and Vice Chairs and members of the council. My name's Alan Shanahan, calling once again from ASME Local 1902 that represents 80% of the employees of Metropolitan Water District. We want to thank you and the other council members for putting this resolution on the agenda. It is very much needed and appreciated. Our employees truly feel the sense of support, and we thank you very much. There will be another article coming out, I'm what we're informed this week. We encourage you to read that, as well as keep up with the growing list of individuals who are supporting our campaign in the legislature and other organizations. And I'll just be brief and just say we again, thank you. We hope we can continue to count on your support in passing the resolution. Thank you very much for your time. Bye.
Thank you, Mr. Shanahan. Um, any, any, there are no other callers, is that right, Corey?
That was, that was our final caller on this item, yes.
Great, so if there are no more comments, let's go to a roll call vote.
You need a motion and a make and a second.
I will move the item.
Oh, whoops, thank you. Moved by McKeon.
Second.
And seconded by De La Torre.
Councilmember De La Torre. Councilmember Brock.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim McCowen.
Yes.
Councilmember McKeon. Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Councilmember Para.
Yes.
And Mayor Himmelrich.
Yes, so that passes unanimously on a motion made by McKeon and seconded by De La Torre. Um, and now we move to item 8A.
Item 8A is adoption of community priorities to guide the budget process for fiscal, fiscal years 2021 through 2023. And I believe we have at least one caller for this item. Two callers.
Three, is that what you said?
Two callers.
Two callers. Well, let's have a staff report. I'm guessing we'll have more by the end. Lane, you're muted. You're muted, Lane. Oops, Lane's muted and...
There we go. We're good to go. I apologize, still transitioning into the office. It's a pleasure to be with you all this afternoon. We're here today for the community priority setting session with the council as the elected representatives of the community. As many of you know, it has been the city's regular practice in recent past for the council to gather before the biennial budget process begins, set high-level priorities for the community, which then inform both the biennial budget process and the work that follows. While we do this process regularly, we seldom do it amidst so much change. And as you know well, this week marks the one-year anniversary of our lives in the pandemic. What I want you to hear from me today is that while we are looking back on the one-year anniversary of the pandemic and all of the emotions that that brings up within the community and the city staff, we also are in a moment where we will begin to see quite soon the very earliest stages of our community recovery. In the first months of the pandemic, we came to you with projections about what the pandemic would mean for our community and for our city budget. Those projections included that parking, sales, and tourism revenue streams, in addition to other revenue streams, would be dramatically reduced during the pandemic and would not immediately recover, that a second surge of the pandemic was likely in the late winter of 2020 into January of 2021, and that we were unlikely to see meaningful federal aid in 2020. Based on those projections, and some of you may remember this slide that I showed you later in the process, it actually came up in a Bloomberg Harvard City Leadership Initiative after we were already in the midst of our budget process, but described so well the process that we were in, which is that we were responding to these projections of what would come from the pandemic. Based on the projections, we responded in April through June of 2020 swiftly and strongly. We stopped capital projects, we utilized 117 million in one-time funds to fill gaps, and most importantly, we restructured the city government to reduce the size of our staff and our expenditures and to align our resources to respond to the community's need pandemic. As you all know well, it was a grueling and quite frankly, a terrible process to have to undertake. But by July 1st, 2020, we had reduced the city's total budget by 192 million, closed the projected deficit, and balanced the city budget. We had put the city in a place to weather the storm. And in the end, unfortunately, the finance team's projections bore out. Our revenues were impacted largely as projected, the winter surge and associated economic shutdown did come to pass, and we did not receive meaningful aid from the federal government in 2020. Because we had already projected those conditions and responded, we were in a position where during the fiscal year, our fiscal health remains intact, our finances have remained stable, and we have retained our AAA bond rating. Since July 1st, 2020, what we've been doing as a city is less responding to the financial impacts of the pandemic, which had already been projected and responded to, but rather serving our community and stabilizing a city government that is operating with a significantly reduced budget. We've been providing the essential services on which the community relies: public safety, clean drinking water, public space and public right-of-way maintenance, public transit, farmer's market, children's recreation when permitted, library services, and so many others. We've been working to support economic recovery through planning, mobility, inspection, permitting, and economic development work. And we have already begun in very early nascent phases to transform the way the city government works, to spend more limited funds wisely and strategically, to focus our most precious resources, our people, on collaborative, efficient, and effective work to serve the community's most pressing needs, to utilize new virtual and digital services, and to bring online new customer service tools to try to become more nimble and more responsive to a community that we hear saying wants us to be more immediately responsive to what in the pandemic are ever-changing needs, to ensure that our values of equity and inclusion inform all the work we do across the city, and to ask at all times, not just what the city government can do, more important than ever because the city government's resources are reduced, not what the city government can do, but what can we as a community do together to meet our community needs? Council, when I shared this slide amid some of the hardest days of the pandemic, I said with conviction that Santa Monica has a bright future ahead. Today, at the one-year mark, what I would like to say to you is that we are finally stepping into the very earliest days of our recovery. Vaccination has now begun in earnest. High-risk populations and key essential service providers are now eligible, and the President stated on Thursday that all adults in America will be eligible for vaccination as of May 1st, and that supply is expected to be available for all adults in America by May 31st. As vaccination has expanded, so has reopening. LA County has just announced that on Monday, we move into the red tier, allowing the earliest return of indoor dining, movie theaters, indoor fitness, and other signs of our recovery. Soon, we will even see our beloved Ferris wheel turning once again. And perhaps most importantly, bill on our city budget. But what's important to see is that the American Rescue Plan will make great strides for our community recovery, because the work that we do as a city is always about the community that we serve. To that end, the American Rescue Plan speeds up vaccination, supports school reopening, provides immediate financial relief to struggling community members, who address unemployment, food, housing, and financial insecurity concerns. And it provides billions of dollars in federal funds across the country to keep tenants in their homes, to provide vouchers, and to fund investments to house the unshelter, to rebuild local economies, including travel and tourism sectors, to revitalize struggling restaurants, to support small businesses, to support public transit, and to address learning gaps more critical than ever coming out of the pandemic. So these three things, vaccination, reopening, and the American Rescue Plan, are unfathomably huge steps toward our community's recovery. And it's in that context today that we come to you to ask you as the elected representatives of the people to set our community's priorities, with respect and grief for where we've been over the year, with appreciation for the slow but steady recovery that will become more and more evident with each and every day that follows, and with our eyes always on the bright future now faintly visible on the horizon that we together are trying to create. As a city government, our recovery will not be immediate. This is not a light switch, but we do believe it will begin being visible in the weeks and months to come. In the biennial budget process today, staff will walk you through some of the considerations that will be undertaken. This is a high-level presentation intended to begin to set the stage. What we ask of you today as the city council is not to begin the details of the budget process, but to articulate what are the community's most pressing priorities for the upcoming two years? Where is it that we together as a community want to focus our more limited resources than we have had before, and where is it that we particularly want to come together to try to see progress and change within the areas that we work together, not just as a city government, but as a larger and broader community? So we appreciate you taking the time on the Saturday again to tell us at a high level what the community priorities are that we all should be focused on. And with that, I want to turn to Christopher Smith, my chief of staff in the city manager's office, and somebody who has really been working across the city government to try to find every way we can work together to serve our community better in what is a change but constantly transforming city government. Christopher, can I turn to you?
Thank you, Lane, and good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, and council. As Lane mentioned, today we come to you with a single but critical ask to identify our community priorities for the next two years. They are a vital component of our budgeting process, informing our city operations and policymaking, and helping us ensure we are communicating, engaging with our community on what matters most. In 2021, they also take on a special importance as they will focus our reopening efforts as availability of vaccine broadens and we are able to once again return to something of a normal. This year, we have heard from over 3,000 members of our community, and now is the chance to consider that input as we shape our fiscal year 2021, 20 through 2023 budget. Santa Monica has a longstanding tradition of seeking community input into the city's budget. About 10 years ago, if you remember, we held community meetings called Santa Monica Talks. In 2015, we migrated to strategic goals. These goals evolved into framework priorities in 2017 and 2019 as we implemented a performance management methodology. Now we have come full circle and returned to the idea of community priorities. As you can see, there's a strong continuity around many priorities across the years, including a commitment to safety, reducing homelessness, and providing safe and affordable mobility options. There's also a commitment to inclusion and diversity, which was a strategic goal in 2015 and was at the heart of the Connected and Engaged Community Framework Priority in 2019. Other priorities have shifted as we have reached a groundbreaking agreement with the FAA to close the Santa Monica Airport in 2029, giving us a new opportunity to think about community, community open space. Likewise, while environmental sustainability never stopped being important to us, the growing immediacy of climate change and its impacts on our quality of life brought it back to the floor in 2019. At the end of the day, regardless of what we call them, community and what we care about most.
Christopher, you just broke up. We didn't hear the end of your last sentence.
Oh, thank you. I was just saying, at the end of the day, regardless of what we call them, community priorities are a reflection of our community and what we care about most. In 2019, as part of adopting framework priorities, the council established a set of values that underlies all city efforts. These values of accountability, equity, inclusion, innovation, resilience, safety, and stewardship define who we are and who we aspire to be, and guide our efforts to reopen, serve customers, develop policies, and design operations. These values have oriented us as we have responded to the pandemic and stabilized our community and our economy, and will continue to serve as a north star as we look forward to our future. And as, as we look ahead to creating our budget, there are some new inputs we need to consider. Economic forecasts, city programs and services, and of course, community priorities are always part of our budget preparation. But this year, we must also consider public health projections and the federal stimulus of $29.3 million. To hear more on our current financial outlook, including the latest on the American Rescue Plan stimulus, and about our plans to adopt city services as health restrictions are relaxed, our, our Finance Director, Gigi DiCavallis, and Acting Assistant City Manager, Susan Klein. First, Gigi will give us the latest on our financial outlook. Gigi?
Thank you, Christopher, and good afternoon, council. So we are thrilled that President Biden signed the American Rescue Plan this past Thursday. The plan is going to provide a boost towards economic recovery that has been so desperately needed at all levels of our economy. The 1.9 trillion in aid will be allocated across our economy, focusing on the people and industries and organizations that need the most help. Funds, as Lane noted earlier, will assist families in need with direct payments, tax credits, unemployment, and extension of SNAP increased aid. There are also funds for rental assistance and to address homelessness and to help schools reopen safely. There is also help for our business community through funds for the travel and tourism sector and the Restaurants Revitalization Fund for small and mid-sized restaurants, and another infusion of funds for the Paycheck Protection Program. This time, this program will be made more accessible to nonprofits, and funds are provided for additional COVID testing and contact tracing, as well as for vaccine distribution. And finally, we're receiving the aid that we've been hoping for, and the $350 billion is coming directly to every state and local government in the country. The broad infusion of these funds into the economy to help us all restart is historic, as the entire economy is going to be lifted up at once. All right, one moment. For the city of Santa Monica, this translates to $29.3 million in one-time funds that will be paid out in two tranches, with half coming within 60 days of President Biden's signature, so within two months, and the other half one year later. And these funds must be spent within about three and three-quarter years, about three and a half years by the time we would program them, so by December 2024. This is a game changer for us. While there are some limits on the use of the funds, the terms of use are much broader than the previous CARES Act funds that we had received that were very limited to COVID response expenditures and for a very limited amount of time, during which time people could spend them. Instead, now we'll be able to use these new funds over a longer period of time to transition to in-person services in a safe way, and also to expand services that need additional resources in order to further our community priorities that we're going to be talking about today, and also economic recovery. This longer period to spend funds will allow us to take care of one-time funding needs early on, but most importantly, it will allow us to allocate the funds over several years to support expanded programs until our own revenue streams recover and catch up to a point where they can take over the funding for those programs. We've already started looking at how we can spread out these funds over time so that we can maximize their use, and we will be returning to you on April 13th at a council meeting, our proposed allocation plan on one-time spending and then the allocation across years. Before April 13th, we may present you with the option to use a very limited amount of funding, of spending that will not substantially impact the overall plan. It's helpful to explain how we might use stimulus funds, stimulus plan funds, sorry, over time with a visual. Take me a look at the chart in the slide. The blue line at the bottom shows our general fund five-year forecast projections of the difference between revenues minus expenditures. While the areas above the zero line mean that we're in the black with revenues available to cover additional expenditures, so a couple of years in. Sorry, anything below the zero line means that we are still operating with a structural deficit, where we're spending more than we're bringing in in a given year. When you recall when we came to you at mid-year, we talked about the potential need in the absence of stimulus funds to continue to suspend the transfer of measured GSH sales tax funds to the Affordable Housing Fund in order to cover unfunded operating expenditures until our revenues recovered sufficiently. In this chart, we're showing the amount that is dependent on GSH funds below the line. So anything below the zero line, that is what we were going to potentially be needing GSH funds for if our revenues didn't come in a little bit stronger or if we weren't receiving stimulus funds. What the new stimulus funds will allow us to do is fill this hole below the line and then allow sales tax funds to be transferred to affordable housing. Additionally, council will be able to program a certain amount of funds starting next year or even a little bit earlier, maybe starting April 13th, to raise service levels to what we would otherwise have had to wait five years to reach. And that's the point at which the blue and orange lines meet. The important thing to note here is that whatever service expansion is funded with stimulus, say, next year, we'll need to continue to support those services with stimulus funds until our own revenues have grown enough to be able to pay for them. So for example, a $3 million increase in next year's budget that's paid for with stimulus funds would translate to over $12 million of stimulus funds used over four years to support these services. So in our example here, we've run a scenario where we would use stimulus funds to cover the ongoing shortfall in the early years below the line and then have added a $3 million, we've added $3 million in new funding next year. And the way we've done it in this example is another $3 million the following year. On top of that, through the years, as revenues are going to grow, the $6 million in new programming will rely less and less on stimulus funding until it can be supported by our own revenues at the end of the forecast period. Someone that I've talked to about this has called it training wheels, and I think that is a good way to think about it, is we need the training wheels right now and then slowly we can take them off. So, next slide, please. As I mentioned before, we'll come back to you in April to discuss and determine the most optimal approach to allocating these funds over time, including the appropriation of one-time funds this year. In the meantime, we'll be assessing the various other elements of the rescue plan, such as the $31 billion for rental assistance, housing vouchers, and to assist people experiencing homelessness, so that we can determine what other funding the city might be able to access. For example, and this is just an example, the council may decide that the assistance we would get from the rescue plan in the area of affordable housing may provide us with the alternative to use the funds we're setting aside for the GSH suspension for another $1 million in ongoing services. So in other words, the amount that would go towards GSH would translate to about $1 million in ongoing services during that training wheel period. The decisions that you will make today on priorities, along with the work that we'll continue to do in April to determine the funding allocation of the funds, the stimulus funds will help shape the city's fiscal year 21-23 proposed biennial budget. The proposed budget will be published on May 10th for everyone to be able to access and will be discussed in a council budget study session on May 25th. Staff will then return to council on June 22nd with any final changes that are incorporated into the budget based on our discussions on the 25th, and council will adopt the fiscal year 2021-22 budget and approve the budget plan for fiscal year 2022-23. And now I will pass it off to Susan Klein. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Gigi. Good afternoon, everyone. As you move through this budget process over the next few months and set community priorities today, we want to pause on where we're at in the broader context of state reopening tiers and what we can expect from the county's progress moving through reopening criteria. This slide shows a partial list of how your city team has been serving the community since last March, whether our work has been in-person or remote. Where we had to pivot to continue to provide services, we moved quickly to go virtual or protect our onsite staff with proper health measures that will be a part of our new normal going forward. With our restructured teams, we accomplished a lot. As Lane mentioned earlier, the latest service we've been able to restore thanks to PD, HR, and mobility moving quickly are our crossing guards to support school reopening. As we are set to expand our services and programs more steadily, we do it from a new baseline that is more streamlined, nimble, and virtual, unlike so many other jurisdictions that are looking to further contract. Unlike previous stunts of reopening, however, just to reshutter our services yet again, we are now on a steady track of progressive expansion. Our plans to expand in-person services and return more staff onsite will be phased and starts with public-facing services. Reinvigorating city operations will be aligned with public health guidance and state reopening tiers. Even as further reopening is announced, we are still waiting on some protocols within some areas. So it will take some time, even though restrictions have been lifted for the county to get the protocols in place by operational area. So lots going on around reopening, thankfully. Today, well, actually, today we're officially in red. I've updated my talking points on this three times already in the past few days. That's how dynamic the situation is. But on Monday, we will officially be in red when the restrictions start to formally lift. And again, some county protocols are yet to be established in different areas. It's also important to be mindful that we could likely be in orange by the end of this month, but potentially early April, but soon nonetheless, in this very dynamic environment. Just some quick highlights about how we could move from red to orange. Retail could go from 50% occupancy in red to just some modifications required in orange. Aquariums opening 25% in red and then moving to 50% occupancy in orange. Amusement parks are on target to open on April 1st with 15% occupancy and moving into 25% with major restrictions on concessions. Movie theaters, where we can open to 25% in red and 50% in orange, that is one area we're still waiting on county protocols to be established. Gyms from 10% to 25%, and offices will still be remote in red, but going into orange will just, at this point, require indoor modification. Our approach is tempered as spring break is upon us, along with also the variants of the virus. Planning for expanding city services is fully underway across the organization to align with guidance and budget priorities that council sets forth. We are not out of the woods yet, so please continue to wear the mask. I'm going to make my plugs and get the safe, effective, and free vaccine as soon as it's available to you. So I hope this is helpful information for your budget deliberations and as you set community priorities today that Christopher will expand on further. Thank you.
Thank you, Gigi and Susan.
Yes, thank you, Gigi and Susan. I hope that that background on our financial situation and where we stand with reopening and the health pandemic helps set a baseline environment, a good snapshot of where we are today as we think about our community priorities. Now I would like to tell you more about the process we took to hear from our community and what we learned. Our community survey, while not scientific, was an opportunity to invite the entire community into our priority-setting process. The survey was open to residents and those who worked in or owned businesses or property in Santa Monica. According to the results, 90% identified themselves as residents. To reach people, we sent a postcard in English and Spanish to every home, promoted the survey on our website and social media, provided flyers at the library, farmer's market, and other locations, and printed ads in the three local papers. We also advertised through La Opinión to extend our outreach to Spanish-speaking residents. In the end, we received 3,352 responses. The survey we attached to the report includes more demographic information, but want to just provide a snapshot of some of the key statistics here. Survey takers were given a list of 18 different community priorities. These were drawn from the city's Framework for a Sustainable City of Well-Being, adopted by council in 2019. They cover broad areas of city services with a focus on desired outcomes over specific programs and services. The city has and does work in all of these areas today and will continue to do so in support of community well-being. For example, our communications team works daily to ensure public information is shared across as many media channels as possible. Our cultural services, I think it's now a community services department, has partnered with local fitness experts to provide classes to support physical health. And of course, we trust our fire department to respond to emergencies every day, including those of our fellow Californians when the state fires raged this summer. In the end, the survey results showed reducing homelessness, keeping neighborhoods safe, affordability, environmental sustainability, accessible mobility and transportation, economic opportunity and recovery, and finally, equity and inclusion as the top-ranked priority areas. The survey reflects a great deal of continuity in terms of community priorities for past years. The top five were all priorities in recent years. And economic opportunity and recovery and equity and inclusion rank six and seven on our list, reflective of the focus on these issues following the events of 2020 and the economic uncertainty caused by COVID-19. In addition to the list of priorities, respondents were invited to write in their own priorities if they wished. In reviewing those, their comments lined up with the top-ranked priority areas. There were also several comments related to beginning the park planning for Santa Monica Airport and ensuring clean and safe public spaces. Next up, we've developed a snapshot of each of the top-ranked priority areas to give a common description along with some of the key programs and services we provide today. Thank you. Reducing homelessness was ranked the top issue by 74% of our survey takers. Council recently held a study session on our efforts to tackle homelessness, gave direction on priority initiatives staff should explore, including renewed support for our current efforts and guidance on new priorities like emergency rental assistance, a non-congregate shelter, mental health triage, and a crisis response unit. Homelessness impacts every member of our community, and our staff continue to work with our regional and nonprofit partners to find housing and other critical services for our unsheltered neighbors in need. Keeping neighborhoods safe came in with 64%, ranking it a top priority. Safety and feeling safe is foundational to our well-being. Our police have been out every day before and during this pandemic, engaging with our neighborhoods, responding to emergencies, and protecting our homes and public spaces. We have seen a reduction in Part I crime over the last year and established the Public Safety Reform and Oversight Commission to better connect our community, especially our communities of color, with our police to improve our safety. I also encourage us to think of keeping neighborhoods safe is not just about police services, but also about the safety of our youth and the feeling of safety in our shared public spaces. Affordability came in third in our survey, with 38% of survey takers ranking it a priority. We have a longstanding commitment to affordability, including affordable housing. The city launched the Preserving Our Diversity Program to help burdened seniors to stay in their homes. And this year, we have provided rental relief to our neighbors struggling during this pandemic. As more and more Californians are burdened with high housing costs, affordability also extends to ensuring food security and access to affordable transit, among other things. Even before Santa Monica released its groundbreaking Sustainable City Plan in the 1990s, environmental sustainability has been important to our community. This year, 35% of the respondents ranked it a top priority following the worst fire season in our state's history. The impacts of climate change are here, and we have long established goals to protect our natural resources by reducing carbon emissions, creating sustainable, resilient local water resources, and reducing waste. Our new City Hall East models how net-zero water and net-zero energy building is possible and can save on ongoing costs for our government. And our Sustainable Water Infrastructure Project moves us forward to water independence. The EV Master Plan, our Big Blue Bus Zero Emission Plan, and our Bike Action Plan all move us away from fossil fuels and toward a cleaner way to live. The ability to safely and sustainably move about Santa Monica has made mobility another perennial priority, this year receiving 32% of the votes. Santa Monica has been a leader in developing a multimodal strategy to create networks for bikes and scooters, improve safety for pedestrians and drivers, and working with employers to reduce vehicle traffic by implementing transportation demand management programs and encourage use of bus, light rail, and other non-vehicle options. This year, the mobility team also helped us in our response to the pandemic and by adding, working to add the protected bike lane along Ocean Avenue and create and implement a safe design for the Alfred Fresco Dining Program along Main Street. The economic uncertainty and pressure arising from COVID-19 surely made economic recovery an area of focus this year. In 2020, the city partnered with the Business Improvement Districts and local employers to find ways to ease the severe pressures they were facing with the extended health restrictions. In addition to the Alfred Fresco Dining Program that allowed many restaurants to create expanded outdoor dining, the city launched the Art of Recovery Program to engage our local artists to create inviting open spaces throughout our community. And the Santa Monica Shines Program ensured customers that businesses were taking all the necessary health and safety precautions. Friends and retail and other sectors accelerated as people adopted online shopping and many employees switched to remote working. This city will need to continue to partner with our residents and local businesses to find ways to cultivate a healthy local economy. Rounding out the top priority areas is equity and inclusion. This is a new category we added since it was one of our budget priorities in 2020. While these are also values, we wanted to highlight some of the city's work that is specifically targeted to celebrating diversity and promoting inclusion within Santa Monica. Our staff has been part of the government reliance for racial equity for some years now, and this year, we worked with the local African-American community to design and open the historic Belmar Park. While tackling some of the underlying systemic issues preventing equality, we also worked to celebrate different cultures and communities within Santa Monica, sponsoring programming like the fantastic Black History Month program in February, working on a return of Pride this June, and celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month in the fall. And while there is a commitment to equity and inclusion, work here is never done. Progress must be made. Those were the top-ranked community priorities based on our community survey and brings us to the close of our staff presentation. I just want to remind you that this is the next step in our biennial budget process. I just want to remind you that this is the next step in our biennial budget process. And the priorities adopted today will inform our American Rescue Plan funding allocation recommendations on April 13th and our proposed budget that will be made available on May 10. We are now available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you all. Great staff report. Can we take the screen down so I can see everybody, please? Sorry. Yes, Councilmember Davis. Sorry, I had a little problem with the mute button there. And I had a lot of questions, but I just want to ask a couple. I think we do have some public input, and I obviously want to hear that first. But I think my questions may help inform it. The first question I have is, I really appreciate the breakdown of what our previous priorities were and the projects and programs that we had relating to them. But I have a question from staff, and it's because we're in a different time than 2015 or 2019, which is how we express the goals and ask that is different.
Lane, you're breaking up badly. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Okay, is that better if I get closer? Okay, sorry.
Yes, I keep turning off so that then I forget to turn it back on to respond. But closer is better, but we lost you. But before, so I hate to interrupt, but we have staff members here. And I understand you think this will inform the public comment, but maybe we could have the public comment before we have questions, unless you think it'll really change the dialogue?
No, that's fine. If you want to go to public comment first. I just had a couple of questions about what staff was looking for from us, and I didn't know if that would help the public comment or not.
So, does any, yes, Lane.
I think I may have heard enough from Councilmember Davis. You did break up at the end. One question that has come up is, in the past, we have specifically tied community priorities to particular performance management metrics and the like. Let me explain why that is not presented in the same form. One is that the Office of Performance Management, we did have to cut in the restructuring because we were focused on providing services directly to our community. The other is that you are in a city manager transition. And quite frankly, I know how I would do this, but I don't want to step into my successor's shoes and lay out a performance management process. I think that is one of the few areas that a city manager really should put their own imprint on. So we will get started with some of that, but what we really need from you is the articulation just of the priorities themselves, which I think can be the categories and whether the one-sentence description is the right one from you. Does that help to answer your question?
Yes, because, and let me just give an example, and then I'll shut up, which is, you can express a priority as "we want to house people." And that can be a very broad priority, and it can include reducing homelessness, housing affordability, building more housing, a lot of different things. Or you can express a priority more as a metric-driven priority, which is "I want to reduce homelessness." And so what I hear, and please confirm if I'm right, you're looking for the broader priorities as opposed to, at this stage, the metric-driven priorities, because it sounds like you want to, and I totally understand that. I was just looking for guidance from staff so as we think about it and listen to the public, when it comes time for us to express priorities, we're expressing them in the way that staff wants to hear them.
Good. That's in alignment with me. Does that make sense to you, Councilmember Davis? Do you feel like we're...
Yes, and I'm going to go grab some headphones and see if that helps with my problem.
Thank you both, but Lane, I actually want to ask a follow-up because now I'm a little confused, and that is, as I understood what Councilmember Davis was saying and what you were answering, it was my idea that the priorities would be, would track the community survey. So as I understood what Councilmember Davis said, what she's envisioning is something that says "create more housing" rather than reducing homelessness. And I think some of us were more focused on what the categories were in the survey. So maybe you could help me with that a little?
The categories in the survey were taken with only minor adjustments based on lessons learned from the framework that you used to set your priorities in 2019. So we are very comfortable with and would recommend that you set priorities based on those categories surveyed by the public. I do have to say, and I don't think any of us want this meeting to take nine hours, you're the council. So if that's not right, you can treat that as a starting point, but we do think it is a very helpful starting point because there was work that went into all of those categories describing the work that the city does. They were used in 2019, and when we looked at them, they do appropriately reflect the work that the city does. So we think they're the right starting point and recommend that you use them.
Great, thank you very much. And so now, if no one has any objection, let's move to public comment, and then we can have a robust discussion. How are we doing, Corey?
I know of four callers on this item.
Great, and any video callers or all?
I know that there was one video caller who signed up, and I don't believe that they've joined the meeting yet. So we'll see if they're on by the time we finish the four callers.
Thanks, Corey.
You're welcome, and here we go.
Transferring Michael Soloff.
Michael Soloff, you're in the meeting, and your time starts now.
Thank you. I am speaking today as a co-chair of Santa Monicaans for Renters' Rights. We at Smer support the call to make homelessness a top-budget priority for the next year. First, we as a city need to prevent more Santa Monicaans from falling into homelessness. In the year prior to COVID, two-thirds of unsheltered adults experienced homelessness for the first time in their lives, and sixty percent of those cited economic hardship as the cause. This pattern will continue so long as one-in-five Santa Monica renter households continue to be both low-income and pay more than fifty percent of their meager incomes as rent. Expansion of long-term rental assistance like the POD program, as well as providing emergency rental assistance, is critical to keeping these of our neighbors housed and healthy. Second, we need to create permanent housing in Santa Monica for the roughly one hundred homeless Santa Monicaans who are on our registry. Council set this as a priority three years ago and authorized an RFP to turn the Fourth Street Garage into affordable housing, including housing for homeless Santa Monicaan. Nine bids were received in November 2019, but nothing has happened over the next fifteen months. In addition, the EAH project for homeless housing, supported by the Housing Trust Fund, has not moved forward because it did not get tax credits in the last round. So with federal funds coming, Smer asks that you first pay back to the GS and GSH monies that were diverted last year when the voter-approved affordable housing uses, and then use that money and more to expand the POD program, provide emergency rental assistance, put staff in place to move the Fourth Street Garage Affordable Housing Project forward now, and if necessary, provide assistance to EAH so that it wins tax credits in the next round, and we can get that homeless project built as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Transferring Sheri Davis.
Hi, Sheri Davis. Welcome to the meeting. Your time starts now.
Good afternoon, Mayor Himmelrich, Mayor Proton McCowen, and honorable council members. I'm Sheri Davis, and I thank you for the opportunity to comment today. Wearing several of my hats, I serve as co-chair of Santa Monica's Early Childhood Task Force of SEPS, Community for Excellence Public Schools,
Time starts now.
Good afternoon, Mayor Himmelrich, Mayor Proton McCowen, and honorable council members. I'm Sheri Davis, and I thank you for the opportunity to comment today. Wearing several of my hats, I serve as co-chair of Santa Monica's Early Childhood Task Force of SEPS, Community for Excellence Public Schools, and I served on the executive committee of the Campaign for Measure SM. The city's revenue measure on the November 2020 ballot. There are many ways to measure how strongly our community makes education a priority. Public opinion research prior to placing Measure SM on the ballot showed how important our city's services and school were, voting yes, which equals thirty-six thousand four hundred sixty-five Santa Monica voters. The education community was a key partner in the campaign effort. Our district's PTA and
Thank you.
Councilmember De La Torre.
Yes, I have a question for the speaker, if that's okay?
She's still on?
She is, yeah.
Thank you. Yes.
Okay, yes. Hi, Ms. Davis. I had a quick question. I was informed that there was a demonstration today of Santa Monica, Malibu Unified School District parents that are calling for a recall of school board members and because they want to see the schools reopen and they have other issues. And I would just wanted to know if you plan to outreach to those groups as well so that these parents can be engaged in all the good work that you talked about today?
We make an effort to have a chance for all voices to be heard, and I'm not familiar exactly with that. I was pretty focused on the city council meeting today. So let me get some more information and get back to you, Councilmember De La Torre.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Were there any other questions for this caller?
It doesn't appear so.
Okay.
Transferring Renee Buchanan.
Renee Buchanan, welcome to the meeting. Your time starts now.
Mayor Himmelrich, hello?
Go ahead. Yeah, your time starts now. You're on.
Okay. Mayor Himmelrich, distinguished council members and city staff. I'm here today to voice my support for including homelessness as one of the top priorities for 2021, 2023. Homelessness affects our entire community, from those actually sleeping on our streets to our businesses, to our tourists, to our house, community members. It also has become both a humanitarian and a public health crisis, made worse by the pandemic. No one should ever have to sleep on the streets for any reason. As a community, we have always been a leader in addressing homelessness, but we have failed to address the issue in such a way that we can claim we have made a great step towards controlling it or even resolving it. The equity, resilience, safety, and stewardship of our community all depend on how well we care for everyone who calls Santa Monica home. And so, along with our usual resolve, we now must be more innovative in our approach. There are proven best practices such as Housing First and Permanent Support of Housing. We now need to bring those to scale. And to do so, we need the housing, not just affordable housing, but housing for low, very low, and extremely low-income individuals and families. To accomplish this, we must be innovative. We must step out of the boxes within which we generally approve and construct housing and begin utilizing more cost-effective models, such as shipping containers, shared housing, tiny homes, et cetera, so that we can meet this most important need. As some of you know, I have benefited much from the help Santa Monica, OPCC, now The People Concerned, and Community Corporation have afforded me since that December morning in 2001, when a prominent Los Angeles hospital dumped me in the OPCC Access Center parking lot. I've since had the
I'd like to hear the rest of your remarks, Ms. Buchanan. Do you mind continuing? Thank you.
No, I'm almost done. I have since had the honor of serving on various task forces, work groups, and the Housing Commission, which just goes to show that even those who are by some considered to be the least of us can become stewards of this beautiful city of ours. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Buchanan.
Transferring Kent Stromble.
Kent Stromble, welcome to the meeting. Your time starts now.
Thank you. Hello, council. This is Kent Stromble, and I am a member of the Climate Action Santa Monica Steering Committee, though I am speaking on my own behalf. I want to encourage the council to prioritize the continuation and/or restoration of funding for our city's climate action plan and climate awareness programs. These expenditures should not be considered optional or nonessential because the climate crisis is just that, a fast-approaching crisis, and one that could be far worse than the pandemic if we don't prepare our city for it. In addition, many of the climate solutions will help fulfill multiple city goals, for mobility, public safety, resiliency, resource consumption, and livability, as well as the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions. So I encourage you to fund our climate preparedness and climate awareness programs as generously as possible. These expenditures should clearly be seen as win-win solutions that will expand the efficiency of our limited budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stromble.
Thank you, and we have one last caller on this item.
Transferring Laureen Von Clan.
Can you repeat that name, caller? Hi, welcome to the meeting.
Hello?
Hi, I'm Laureen Von Clan. Welcome to the meeting. Your time starts now.
Okay. Hello. This is Laureen Von Clan, and I'm a resident of Noma and a parent living with two essential workers. And I have a small business here in Santa Monica. A lot of you know me as a co-chair of Climate Action Santa Monica, but I'm involved in several other climate groups and organize in my neighborhood on other issues. I'm not calling as a CASM representative today, but I am calling to ask you to steer a proactive course with the budget with respect to climate. In that regard, I ask you to staff strategically and adequately to bring in and compete for grants that we expect will be available thanks to the Biden administration's commitment to climate. With respect to infrastructure, let's get our bicycle plan finally completed. It's somewhat behind schedule, but we can do better. I appreciate the improvements that have been made recently. Let's expedite permitting for those who seek to transform their homes to renewable energy. Let's encourage all members of our community to choose hundred percent renewable energy, including local generation and storage, which will keep us safe during blackouts, storms, fires, et cetera. We know these things will be more frequent. Please prioritize housing, including affordable and low-income housing in particular, and let's locate it near transit. And finally, I ask that you support and expand support for programs that leverage community and volunteer action, whether that be gardening, stewardship of trees, or increasing public awareness. This includes putting more effort behind the "We Are Santa Monica" Fund, which has proven success already with a hundred million dollars raised. We have a generous and big-hearted community and can do more. Responding to the climate crisis is not separate from economic recovery. The solutions will reduce, for example, asthma triggers when we electrify homes, safe bike Safe bike lanes and safe streets allow low-income workers to get to work. They're the ones most likely to walk and bike. And energy jobs are among the fastest growing in the economy. Please adopt a budget that allows us to, as they say, build back better and will be the better Santa Monica for our families and businesses. And thank you for all of your good work.
Thank you, Ms. Von Clan. I think I should note that we don't have $100 million in the We Are Santa Monica Fund, although we would rejoice if we did. It's a million.
I bet a million.
A million.
I bet a million.
I just don't want people to start thinking we have this incredible fund out there that doesn't exist. Thank you. Yes, Councilmember McEwen.
Well, I'm ready to go to the questions we didn't ask before the public input, if you're done with the public hearing. You should
I think we're done, so go.
Are no more callers waiting, just to be sure?
There was somebody signed up for a video comment, but they have not logged into the meeting, and our agents are trying to get ahold of them to see if we can get their comments in, but that hasn't happened yet.
Then with the mayor's permission, I'll take that as a go. I go ahead and ask the question.
Oh.
I have three questions about revenue. And that's because no matter what priorities we land on today, we won't get them done just by hard wishing. It's going to take revenue and being able to hire staff to implement them. So my first question about revenue is, I'm assuming that we're looking at incoming revenue for the next few years based on a curve of economic recovery back from the businesses we had before. But have we factored in new opportunities that may be coming online, businesses that didn't exist before? I'll give you one example. We had permits for medicinal cannabis that have been delayed for a long time, which I believe that the conflict has now been resolved. So if those businesses come online, and if we then move on as we anticipated, we're having adult cannabis outlets in the city, have we factored that kind of revenue into our plans?
Gigi, can I ask? I know the answer to this, but I think you can go in more specifics than I can.
Yeah, so we are not in the practice of factoring in revenue that, you know, we don't know that it's going to come in the same way that we do not factor in revenue from development or anything like that. With regard to medicinal dispensaries, I believe that that does not bring in sales tax revenue. It's been a while since I've taken a look at that, but I believe that that might be the case. And, you know, that is something that we could be considering in terms of business license tax, but of course, that is not something that we have as a different type of tax right now.
Okay, I'll take that answer then to be the cannabis revenue may be a pipe dream. Let me move on to the other side of the ledger, and that is revenue we may have thought we were going to have that we don't end up having. For instance, the city owns a certain amount of property in the city that we lease to people, and traditionally, that leasing revenue has been part of our stream, and we've depended on it. There is some thought that we may have to forgive some rent on certain properties, the artist spaces at the airport, businesses on the pier. Has that been factored in, given that the council hasn't yet had a policy meeting on what to do about that?
So what I can tell you at this point is that we have not factored in any additional rent relief at this point. However, that is something that we have very, you know, informally been factoring in as we were looking at the use of stimulus funds and what could be happening. And as I mentioned in my remarks before, based on your March 23 review of rent relief, that could be something that you looked at, and we could talk at that point about what impact that would have on our stimulus funds.
And while certainly that rental leave will be a big deal to the tenants who've suffered through COVID with the rest of us, is that a significant amount of money to the city in the big picture? Would that make a big difference in our budget projection?
Well, it depends on the various options that will be offered. It is not a very significant amount of money, but of course, every penny matters at this point. So it really depends on what you would be considering. And of course, it's important to make sure that our businesses are in good shape as well.
My third question has to do with Measure GSH. And in the charts, you showed it as if it's being removed from general use, meant it was being removed from the budget, but of course, that's not so. If the money were being used as advised by the voters, it would still be in the budget, it'd just be specifically earmarked for housing and preventing homelessness, which appear likely to be a priority for this council. Now, the last time we talked about this, I suggested we should not, in this upcoming budget, take away that GSH money from its intended purpose. In fact, I thought we should pay it back from last year. Yet if I read the staff report correctly, it includes continuing to tap the GSH money. If we set housing and homelessness as a top priority and put the GSH money there where it's intended, I mean, these are two pockets in the same pair of pants, aren't they?
So, no, we are actually saying that the stimulus money could be used to fill the hole, the gap, in our general fund that we were, you know, as a kind of as a last resort, seeing where we could potentially, you know, make sure that in order to fund our services, we needed to make sure that we have enough money next year to fund our services. One way to do that would have been to use GSH funds. If council decides to use the stimulus funds to fill that hole next year, then the GSH funds could go back to being taken to the affordable housing area, if that answers your question.
There are very few sources of revenue for the city that, like GSH, came with voter direction on how they were intended, and I just like to honor that intention. What's my last question, mayor?
Other questions? Councilmember Davis.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, good, because I switched to headphones. I just wanted to make
It's better, thank you.
Well, I'm going to follow up on my pre-public comment question, because I started out sort of clear, and now I'm a little muddy again. It seems to me, and so I'm just going to preface this question with, that times have changed, our city government structure has changed, and a lot of the way that we've looked at these priorities in the past has been, to use a word, pretty siloed. In other words, it's reduce homelessness or reduce crime. And it seems to me that in these difficult times, but also in these opportunity for innovative times, we need to sort of maybe think a little more holistically. So I'm just wondering, you know, from staff's perspective, and I guess I'm going back to my original question, but I just want to make it clear. Let me just give a perfect example. As I've sort of thought about it and read the staff report and looked at our prior priorities, rather than say affordable housing is a priority, or reducing homelessness is a priority, I would like to declare that having a securely housed Santa Monica is a priority, which would include a lot of those various components. Securely housed means reducing homelessness. It means making sure that housing is affordable. It means making sure that people who are currently housed but insecurely housed can stay in their homes. So it would be, for example, emphasizing the POD program. And to me, that makes more sense, because I think what happens is we get really siloed and forget that all these things are interconnected. But I also don't want to give staff direction that's meaningless to them. So I'm sort of going back to my original question. With that example, what are you looking for? And I want to make it clear, I understand you're not asking us for metrics today, like how would we measure success in those areas, but is giving maybe less siloed, broader aspirational goals more helpful? So that's my question.
Councilmember for reducing homelessness. We have the description, reducing unsheltered homelessness and preventing homelessness among low-income residents. In my mind, that preventing homelessness among low-income residents does encapsulate keeping Santa Monicans in their homes, though you could include additional language there. Does those descriptions, I believe, were taken from a process undertaken by city staff, an extensive one as part of the framework. Does reaching alignment on those descriptions help at all with your concerns? If that makes sense, if for each priority, we have a one-sentence or a one-phrased statement from you as to what you mean by reducing homelessness, or whatever you want to call the priority?
Well, the reason, yes, it helps. But for me, for example, I remain severely concerned that there may be people who are not on the cusp of becoming homelessness, but who still are paying an inordinate amount of their income for rent here in Santa Monica. We have a lot of people who are paying more than 50%, and I'm not sure that we would say those are people in immediate danger of becoming homeless, but their quality of life is affected because they're having to pay such a high percentage of their income and rent. So when I say sort of securely housed, I'm thinking of it more about a broader housing policy that says people who live in Santa Monica ought to be housed, they ought to be securely housed, meaning give them as many tenant or other protections as we can, and at the same time, also focus on those other economic factors that over time reduce the number of people who feel secure in their homes. So that, you know, maybe I'm barking up the wrong tree here, but I'm just trying to think a little more broadly, and in all honesty, a little more holistically, rather than, I mean, I recognize, everyone says homelessness number 30, totally under, and don't agree with that. But my concern is that if we focus on, you know, reducing the number of our unhoused neighbors or reducing the number of our neighbors who are in immediate danger of falling into homelessness, that's an excellent goal, and I'm not denigrating that goal at all, but that we need to have a broader housing policy. And so I'm trying to think more in terms of, as we go about budgeting and coming out of the pandemic, how we sort of express those broader goals. But, you know, that's just sort of where I am, and it may just be as I listen to the discussion, I'll understand it more, but.
Let me say this to try to help guide the discussion. Some of what you have said is within our affordability description. If the council wanted to, as you say, take reduce homelessness and state it more broadly to be more of a focus on our overall housing policy, we can do that with you. What I would ask is, if you do that, let's not have five, because what we don't want are priorities that effectively just describe everything that the city does, because that doesn't help us as city staff to know what you care about. If you have, you know, two to three broader priorities, we can probably work with those. So that would be up to you as the council.
Okay, that's helpful.
Step in if you start describing everything we do, and I think we're not actually prioritizing.
Okay, thanks, that's helpful.
Councilmember McCallum.
So a lot of what we mentioned is kind of the question I've been asking myself and trying to understand, the survey that we put out and what we ultimately got back in data from our residents, was challenging for me because we just had this meeting a couple weeks ago too about our homeless priorities, right? And in that, we had a lot of affordability stuff, and we prioritize those, you know? We said that we want to do rental assistance, we want to fund, we want to keep doing more of that. And so I too felt that, and I think we see it in the data a little bit. And so my question is, if we do have the ability to potentially combine and ultimately reduce the total number, because when I was also looking at what the council had previously done, affordability fell under the header of economic opportunity. And so now we have economic opportunity and recovery as its own unique thing, with a much more narrow key programs and descriptions. And so I think there is space in there too, where if there was some version of a combination of homelessness and affordability as a mutual thing, and then you can have GSH funds back in and restore the funds that were taken last year, and given things, you create that larger funding bubble that clearly the community is looking for. It's addressing more of the issues that we all sort of identify as homeless-related and affordability. And then potentially, we can, you know, move economic opportunity and affordability up too, and recovery, and get those in there without keeping it so far down. Because I think that some of what economic opportunity actually is and recovery actually is, was lost in this survey a bit. So.
So I just want to give you guys a couple of data points when we discuss this. Kevin, I see your hand, and Oscar, I saw your hand. And that is that when we talk about affordability and households pay more than 50% of their median income towards rent, there are a total of 135 households in Santa Monica who are above median income, which is $77,000 for a family of four, pay more than 50, I'm sorry, more than 50% of their income. So that is 135. There are 7,400 households who are below area median income, and again, I'll repeat it, $77,000 a year for a family of four. 7,400 households who are paying more than 50% of their income towards rent. So I would say that those are not comparable data points in the sense that in addition to being lower income, what's left over when you're below area median income and paying 50% of your income towards rent, means you just have less left over at the end of the month than people over area median income. I think that those are striking numbers and show why saying affordability for lower-income people should be our key goal here. So I want to answer I'm sorry. Mayor, we have a caller on the, the caller finally got through. Let me know when you want to let that person in. It's Tom Larmour.
Denise, he dropped. It looks like he dropped off the meeting anyway.
Okay, go back to your discussion. Thank you. Councilmember De La Torre.
Sue, hang on one sec. Are we at discussion?
We're discussing. We're discussing.
Okay, got it. Okay.
But we would have let him in because he had registered before.
That's not why I was asking. It was with regard to the data points that you laid out, that I was inquiring at what stage we were in, in this.
Well, I'm pretty sure we're in discussion. I'm not hearing many questions here. So Councilmember De La Torre, it may be a little melded, but yes.
It sounds like discussion to me. There's a lot of talking going on. But anyway, so here's what I'm thinking. My best thoughts on the document is, you know, we look at the response we received from our residents, and it's only, what, like 3%, I think? I'm not sure. It's a small percentage, right, of feedback? And yet, the majority identified two issues, and I think they're both very linked. One of them, in the survey result, it's homelessness, and the other one is public safety. And I would bet that if we asked the residents to break that down, to really articulate why those are the two issues they care most about, is because I think what our residents really want to see is more safe and clean streets. So I'm thinking in the broad term, can we have something that's that broad, like, you know, safe and clean public space? Maybe it's public space instead of streets, because the parks are also included. And then I started reflecting on that a little bit, and I said, well, you know, part of the clean part, you know, our frontline employees in our city that are doing an excellent job cleaning our public space, many of our employees at public Yeah, they would, yeah. They would, they're the ones on the front line keeping things very clean, but in terms of the safety, it's our law enforcement officials, right, that have to, unfortunately, in some cases, have to enforce the law. And as long as we're doing, from what my understanding And as long as we're doing, from what my understanding, from what our interim city attorney stated in our meeting on homelessness, on the question of enforcement, because in all the documents that I read that regarding this item, I don't see the word enforcement show up one time. And I think that our residents want to see the services for our homelessness population and people that are on our streets struggling, especially for mental illness. I know that that should be prioritized. But on the other side, for the behavior that is really impacting people's quality of life and sense of safety, the behavior, so not the person, but the behavior, the lewd behavior, the violent behavior, the inappropriate behavior that's just, in many cases, just out of line with our community's values, we need enforcement, and we need to have the resources to enforce those rules. So I just want to make sure that we, that I express that. And the other thing I wanted to say is that our members of law enforcement that are enforcing these rules and working hard on the frontline, they deserve our full support as a city council. And I know that's not really so much about money, but it's also, it's just about messaging and expressing, you know, our support for those people on the frontline. So I just wanted to make a pitch and advocate.
So Oscar, Oscar, yeah, so I don't want to, but is what you're suggesting, because you could make it a motion to have the top two categories, right, to have homelessness and, and keep neighborhoods safe as our two priorities, and then flesh out what we mean by that? Is that what you're suggesting?
I think that's a great idea, because, you know, on the issue of just homelessness is just such a big term, and it's very, and also, you know, yes, I think that to define that, but, and also the item on equity and inclusion. I wanted to ask staff, how do they view equity and inclusion? I'm seeing, you know, that we have a lot of blind spots in regards to equity and inclusion that I want to advocate for, for example, really quick, like diversity in hiring, for example, or contracting opportunities for minority and women-owned businesses. Anyway, I'll leave it at that, but those two, those two issues, homelessness, public safety, equity and inclusion, I would like to further define.
That would be three, right? I counted three, as I count.
Yeah, three, yes.
I just want to make sure I can still count to three, thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Yes, Councilmember McEwen, I think you were next, and then Councilmember Brock and Councilmember Davis.
Well, it's important we stick to what is on the agenda. I mean, by law, that's what we're allowed to act on today. And we have been presented with a list of seven potential priorities from which we've been asked to choose no more than five. And that was informed by a community survey. Now, it wasn't a totally scientific community survey, as has been pointed out. And if you look at the demographics, they do not match the demographics of our city. Probably the most outstanding one to me was that we are a city of over 70% renters, but only 48% of the respondents were renters. Though, for instance, a crisis I fear is coming for our city, the eviction cliff at the end of the COVID supports, probably was not as well represented in the responses as it would have been by a scientific sampling. So we have to do some interpretation as a city council. That comes with the job. But frankly, I think that the top priorities that were listed are correct if we interpret them broadly, as we're being asked to do. And for instance, protection from eviction, that's involved in reducing homelessness. Keeping neighborhoods safe, I think, includes keeping neighbors safe. Affordability is a direct concern. Economic opportunity, you don't have much opportunity if you're evicted. Equity and inclusion is obviously the lower income people most threaten. So I don't think there's a problem with the priorities put in front of us. And I have a suggestion which I'll make as a motion, which is that the top five that are listed on the page, reducing homelessness, keeping neighborhoods safe, affordability, environmental sustainability, and accessible mobility and transportation are all key. The two that came in sixth and seventh actually should infuse all five of those. We should be looking at economic opportunity and recovery in everything we do in this community, because we need that revenue to make these other things happen. We should be looking at equity and inclusion, not just in housing, but in economic opportunity. That's hugely important, that we let minority businesses thrive in this city. In accessible mobility and transportation, we talked the other day about micro-mobility and how important it is that those options be available in all neighborhoods, not just the ones full of rich tourists, and that the prices be controlled in some way to make these financially available to all people in our community. Environmental sustainability, boy, there's a lot of environmental justice that needs to be looked at, which would go with equity and inclusion. So I will move that we adopt the top five on the list as our primary priorities for the city. Reducing homelessness, keeping neighborhoods safe, affordability, environmental sustainability, accessible mobility and transportation, and that in adopting those five, we further affirm that all five be interpreted in the budget process as being informed with economic opportunity and recovery and equity and inclusion, which are hugely important values for our community.
Is there a second for that motion? Sorry, Kevin. Any further discussion? And that motion fails for lack of a second. So, Councilmember Brock, I think you were next.
Thank you. Councilmember DeLittore hit on a salient point. And when I looked at the survey, while I am extremely concerned about our residents who are teetering on the edge of homelessness because they may be evicted when all is said and done, and we need to help them. So yes, I want to see the POD program expanded. I want to see us help them. But I'm going to interpret the results of the survey in a different way. Because to me, I think the residents strongly feel that we need to find a way to make our streets and our parks safe. They want our city clean as well. So I don't want to take, what I've been hearing, with the exception of Councilmember DeLittore a little bit, is that we're concerned about how do we get more low-cost housing? How do we help the residents who are still housed? I want to help them too. But if I went out in the street right now, and all seven of us took 10 different blocks of the city right now and walked it for the next two hours, and talked to people on the street, you would find that they're concerned about crime, they're concerned about homelessness, they're concerned about having safe parks, safe streets, they're concerned about having some more semblance of street cleaning come back, and they're concerned about making sure our parking garages, our parks, our streets, I know I'm repeating that, but I think it's important. They're concerned about reducing the amount of burglaries, the amount of robberies, the amount of sometimes perceived safety in our city. You know, it's, we can't stop, and I'll repeat this for residents, we can't stop every incident of crime in our city. But my condo complex has had two instances of crime in the last 10 days, and I'm on what's always been considered a very safe street. So if you went and asked our residents how they view homelessness, it's reducing homelessness. And for me, that means when we're going to spend money in July, we need to spend money expanding mental health services. We can't stop homelessness on a nine-to-five Monday-to-Friday routine. It has to be afternoons and evenings. We have to have teams out 24 hours a day. And honestly, when I looked at the start of the survey from 2015, 2017, 2019, I see homelessness there, and I'd really like to know, and it's not for this meeting, but the metric on how we succeeded over those six years. So if we aren't succeeding, I think we have to do more. The fire department's community response team is the start, having more HLP teams from the police department, one at night, having LA County, of course, I understand they're going to join us for mental health services. We have to do more. We, and as a city, we cannot be continually be reactive. We need to be proactive in taking care of residents' concerns, and I think that's a very important point. We've become reactive. So for me, public safety and homelessness are intertwined, and almost separately. A separate goal or sub-goal is of course helping low-income renters and the people really in need stay in their houses. But we've got to help get people off our streets, we've got to make our city safe. And if we don't do that, we're letting our residents down, because in every segment of the city, that's what I hear every day. Thank you.
So are you going to make, I need, so do you want to turn that into a motion?
Let Councilmember DeLittore wants to speak, and then I can come back and try and craft a motion, or someone else can.
So I think I have Councilmember McCowen, then Councilmember Davis, and then Councilmember DeLittore.
I think Councilmember Davis's hand was up, then mine, then DeLittore's, so I'll let, I'll let her go.
That's fine, okay, I got it wrong, I'm sorry.
So, so I, the first thing I have to say is, it really disturbs me to be here, homelessness and crime described as being intertwined. I think that, I understand that some people do believe that a lot of crime in the city is related to homelessness. I think that's unfair, and I think it's inappropriate, and I think it's not true. There's a lot of uncomfortable and maybe even antisocial behavior that we see among people who are unhoused, but I think somehow entwining those is, is just in all honesty, not treating people with dignity, inappropriate. I do agree, however, again, going back to my feeling that I think we need to be a little more, less siloed and more broad thinking about these problems. And the reason I didn't second Councilmember McEwen's motion was because I was concerned that the notion of equity and social justice wasn't in the forefront of it, because I do think that we now know that's an area that we can't just say it infuses everything, because I don't know what that means. I understand what Councilmember McEwen means, and I know he had the best intentions, but I think we need more intentional programming. So I'm going to make a motion, and it may not get a second, and that's okay, that we identify four priorities. One is a clean and safe Santa Monica. Two, a securely housed Santa Monica. Three, an equitable and socially just Santa Monica. And four, a sustainable Santa Monica. And I think if we identify those four priorities, I think that's consistent with what we heard from our community, and nevertheless, gives staff the latitude to, you know, have further discussions about what might be the appropriate metrics or programs under each of them.
I will second that.
So we have a motion by Davis, seconded by McEwen. And as I understand the motion, it's, one, a clean and safe Santa Monica, two, a securely housed Santa Monica, three, a just and equitable Santa Monica, and four, a sustainable, environmentally sustainable, is what I heard you saying. Is that right, Santa Monica?
Well, two things. One, socially just, because I think social justice, for example, can include, for example, the right to early childhood education, because we know that's way that disadvantaged families can become more, better, have access to resources in our community. And no, I didn't necessarily limit sustainability to environmental sustainability. I didn't use that word, but, because I was thinking of sustainability and maybe slightly broader terms, but certainly meant to include environmental sustainability.
Okay, so I'm just going to say that it's sustainable Santa Monica. Okay, Councilmember McCowen.
I, I like this, I just, I'm curious about the securely housed, and if, I like it as just a short title, but I want to ensure that when we're saying securely housed Santa Monica, we're fully incorporating and appreciating that this, this encapsulates reducing homelessness and serving in all those ways, because we aren't necessarily going to securely house everyone that's already homeless. And I don't have the exact language to clarify that, but I'm wondering if we think securely housed is sufficient to include, that we are intent on, you know, everything we set out in our homeless priorities, like the emergency rental assistance, the unfunded things, right? The alternative non-congratual shelter, behavioral health triage, and low-acuity crisis responses as still priorities in dealing with our current homeless.
Well, yeah, and I was expressing these as aspirational goals. So our aspiration would be that every person who currently is unhoused would be securely housed. But if it helps clarify it and makes it clear to our constituents, I would gladly change, you know, reduce homelessness in an effort to create a securely housed Santa Monica or something like that, so that reducing homelessness is incorporated, so people understand it's there, because it clearly was intended to be there.
And maybe it's just a reduce homelessness and, you know, and, and as opposed to, and securely housed, and maintain, maintain security or something.
Excuse me, I see the city manager wants to.
So, Councilmember McCowen may have gotten where I was going to go. Reduced homelessness is in the framework. When we came to you with the homelessness report, we talked about addressing homelessness, which included all four pillars. So I just want to throw out there for your consideration, addressing homelessness, which includes the four pillars, but I know Councilmember Davis wants aspirational, and I'll turn to her. So I just wanted to throw that in as a way you can think about.
Well, with a way to express that, Ms. Dill, be to say, a securely housed Santa Monica, which includes continuing our efforts, using the four pillars to reduce homelessness in Santa Monica.
I think between clean and safe and securely housed, yes, you could stick with securely housed Santa Monica, and let us know that you intend that to encapsulate the four pillars of addressing homelessness.
That works for the second term.
Okay, well, so I haven't spoken yet, and Councilmember DeLittore, if you don't, oh, Councilmember Parr, and then I will speak. Go ahead.
Just wanted to point out, I'm really enjoying the conversation, and, you know, we all pretty much have the same perspective and ideas about what's important for us to concentrate on. But I just wanted to point out that we have 1,000 comments under the other that I'm hoping that we can address or capture, not all of them, but I'm saying like, the key points that have been, keep being brought up in all those comments under whatever our priorities are. And for example, I'm not sure where the tie-in is, but I just wanted to point this out, you know, it almost, it seems like every other comment is stop overdevelopment, stop commercial development, overdevelopment, overdevelopment, traffic and overdevelopment, and as well as, you know, continue conversation or continue references to crime and safety, and especially in our schools. And so as we look at the five priorities, we need to also kind of take a look at what the voices of our community have put here as well. So that's all, I just want to make a comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. So I will not be supporting the motion, and I'll tell you why. You know that affordable housing is near and dear to me, and I have spent countless dollars and hours to promote affordable housing in the city. I also believe in sustainability. I think that what we're trying to do here is not to express the normal values that we have, but to pinpoint areas where we want to make a significant difference over the next two years. And so all of the things that, that we're saying here are things that we have said every time, whether it's seven priorities, you know, 10 priorities, I believe that this is a time with the limited funds we have, that we need to be focused. And I think we need to be focused on what I view as the tragedy of the last couple years, which is homelessness. And I think to not say the word homelessness in discussing what one of our goals is, is ignoring what the survey said, and I note that the survey had two very big percentages of people, and then dropped off to affordability at 38%. So there were two items above 50%. Homelessness and what I view as correct, clean and safe streets. You know, I don't view this as an issue of crime. Um, uh, you know, I don't view this as, uh, an issue of crime because I believe that, um, one of the reasons that people don't feel that they're safe is because of perceived threats and not actual crime. So I personally would support, um, a, a program and, and let me make a substitute motion that the top two priorities in the survey, as we, uh, have flushed them out, um, should be our two priorities for the next two years. One, reducing homelessness and two, um, clean and safe neighborhoods, not just streets, neighborhoods. Um, and, and I think that that's what we were asked for in the survey, uh, that, uh, that, that respondents to the survey have asked us for in an overwhelming majority. And, and I think that that's what we should be striving for over the next two years. So that would be my substitute motion. Councilmember Brock?
I'll second.
Councilmember Parr?
Could we, and I, I'm in complete agreement with your, your two. I think that we need to focus all our efforts on those two items in order to elevate all the other things that are of concern. But could we further, instead of saying reducing homelessness, could we put something along the lines to commit resources, um, to address homelessness in there as well?
Well, I think, isn't that part of, we have to commit resources to reduce it. I, look, I'd rather say eliminate, I mean, eliminate homelessness, but, um, uh, but, uh, I, I think by definition, it includes committing the resources because we're committed to helping people have a roof over their heads and not be on the streets. Uh, I mean, I, I, and I think it's assumed in the definition, which I don't have in front of me again, or the one sentence that the, uh, staff put forward and, um, and, uh, I, I think that that would be part of, yeah.
I, I just wanted to make sure that we were clear on that, that I was clear on that. Thank you.
Um, yes, and, and, uh, Oscar?
I really appreciate, uh, the work to try to simplify and try to narrow it down. And I, I like, uh, I like what Gleene brought forward. Um, and I, and, and so I think the, the two, um, the, the two items are the priority, you know? And, and what I'm trying to figure out is how, how do we, how do we give staff, because staff needs the direction, right? Because after we have this meeting, then there's going to be, uh, a direction that they, that the staff will move in. One thing that I want to also advocate for, and this is not with the priorities so much, but also that we have, maybe we can have two town hall meetings. I know in the past, uh, we've done that as a practice, just to inform the public about the condition of the budget, you know, what it is. It doesn't even have to be like a Q and A type thing, more like presentations. And, and if we don't have a presentation, or we can just run the presentation two times. I don't know. Just more information to the, to the public and the residents about the condition of our financial, you know, situation and our, our budget and all would be good. But, um, I, I, I'm asking, uh, on, on safe, safe and clean streets, can, can we, can we make it more, more, uh, action oriented, like, like if we said safer and cleaner public space? And...
That's great. Uh, no, that, that would, uh, you seconded me, right?
Uh, I think it was Phil.
Oh, Phil seconded me. I'm sorry. But yes, I, I think that that was the way Phil formulated the, just, uh, yeah, so I see him nodding. So yes, uh, and when I say, yeah, so space is good. Or I said neighborhoods, but if you want to say space, that's fine.
And, and the only thing, the only question I have on the, you know, if, if we're not talking about equity and inclusion, um, how, how, how do we continue these initiatives? I think we're moving in the right direction. I think it needs to be expanded. There's a lot of, uh, we can define, we can further define equity and inclusion. I just fear that the motion as presented right now with only two items, what, what, is it going to limit us, you know, versus, you know, moving in, in the direction and, and, and finalizing some of these, uh, aspirational goals that we have, right? Uh, I want to keep that work going. So I, I just, I, I really like...
I think if we pick a couple areas, Oscar, and then, um, and, and we say in all of this, with the overlay of diversity and inclusion, you know, affordability, et cetera, of these other things that we talk about all the time. What I, uh, the reason I made this motion is because I'd like to be more focused over the next couple of years with our limited resources. That's why. I don't think anything else is going away, but if that, um, I, I mean, I think we're doing a major push on the diversity and inclusion aspect of it, but we can, uh, say with an overlay of diversity and inclusion, if you think that that will satisfy it.
Yeah, because what I'm, what I'm thinking is, how do we, how do we, uh, send a message to staff that we want to see policies around diversity and hiring and real practices, you know, or contracting opportunities? I mean, there's minority and women-owned businesses where we could really define what inclusion means for our city government, the, the services we purchase, for example. How do we, uh, uh, expand on that language, you know, if, if we don't, if we don't have that as a, as a benchmark? And, you know, I, I'm concerned that if we only to, uh, choose these two items, we're cutting ourselves short. Can we add a third one then and, and, uh, around, uh, equity and inclusion or equity, inclusion and justice? I mean, if, if...
It's a friendly amendment because if, if you're concerned that, then that's, that's acceptable to the maker. How about the secondor? Yes. Okay. So we're there.
Okay. All right. Great.
He's nodding again. And Phil, you may speak.
I, I accept the amendment. And, and if I can make one quick comment in that for Councilmember De La Torre, the staff is listening. So they're going to take those major priorities. I don't think it means we discard the rest of everything we hold dear in the city and, and everything we want to do. What we're saying is we're going to commit major resources to the top two priorities. That doesn't mean we abandon everything else in the city that we want to make sure that we continue and our ethics and standards.
Yeah. No, I agree. And, and one thing, because this last item, Phil, uh, is one of the newer ones on the, on the city's agenda, uh, I think it just needs a little bit more push. And that's, that's why I wanted to include it and I'm glad, I'm glad that you, uh, accepted it.
City manager?
Can I, um, try to clean up the, the substitute motion a little bit? First, I want to remind everybody you have a motion, substitute motion on the table. Uh, what I am hearing, uh, if I can try this, um, is that you want to expand reducing homelessness to addressing homelessness, which would make the description potentially the four pillars. And I can put this up on the screen. Um, Christopher, I'm going to send this to you and ask if you can help me. Um, I'll just, let me just, I just want to be sure we know what you're asking. So let me see if Christopher can put this up on the screen for me. But it would be addressing homelessness with the four pillars. The second would be clean and safe Santa Monica, create an atmosphere marked by clean and safe public spaces and neighborhoods. And the third would be equity and inclusion, which we have as a city that provides all community members with access to resources and opportunities where differences in life outcomes cannot be predicted by race, class, gender, disability, or other identity. Um, that, that is the old sub outcome definition. So I just want to be sure that, that you're talking about categories and definitions. And if you want to change those, that, that you change them.
That's what I'm talking about. So, so, uh, is that what, that, that's what the secondor is talking about?
I, absolutely. I love your definition, Lane.
One question?
Yes, Oscar?
Yes.
I see you, Christopher.
Uh, Lane, on the education, on the equity and, uh, inclusion, can, can we add educational, uh, educational employment and economic opportunities? Where I'm, everyone I've talked to, I've, I've been trying to, you know, really refine sort of what is this, uh, how can we move forward on equity and, and, uh, inclusion? And, and it, it really comes down to educational opportunities, employment opportunities, uh, and economic opportunities, which could be like entrepreneurship and stuff like that. And I was wondering if we can include those three words within, within the language to further define.
Christopher, can you add that right after here? Let me just send it to you. I apologize.
Okay. And Councilmember McCowen has had her hand up, if you don't mind.
It's just, and George would probably have to answer this. I just want to make sure I'm clear. If we're narrowing to just these few things and now with, with Councilmember De La Torre's further defining equity and inclusion, that's now encompassing an economic opportunity, which wasn't even early in the language. I want to make sure that what Councilmember Brock said, that we're still going to do all those things, that that's actually a true statement. Because we've so narrowly defined this that we are leaving out some pretty important areas, uh, that, that are clearly important to our community. So can, can, George, can you tell me if, if I am interpreting this incorrectly and that those things will all still be part of our budget process and they'll still get funding?
Yeah, I think that's really for the city manager. I mean, what you will be doing if you adopt this substitute motion is advising the city manager and staff that these are your three primary community priorities.
Councilmember, to, to answer your question, will we continue doing, will the budget include, um, items that are focused on other areas? Yes, we want to provide clean water to our community. There's, there's a great example. We're going to continue to provide water to the community. Does it matter what your priorities are? Yes. So if there's something you think should be in there as a priority, you should advocate for it. I can tell you, as, as your interim city manager, the one that I have some concern is not included here is economic recovery. Will you still see that in the budget? Um, yes, you will have to still see some economic recovery efforts in the budget because if the economy doesn't recover, you can't do these things to the level that your residents want them. And I will not set up my successor for failure by promising the community something that we can't fund because the economy is not in a position to fund it. But, uh, so, so you, um, and to Councilmember De La Torre's statement earlier, you do have a study session on the budget. It may even be two study sessions on the budget, or, or I believe it's sometimes gone into two days. Um, so yes, the budget will come back to you and you will have a budget process. But as we look at the limited funds that we have, your priorities do matter to us. And what you say your top priorities are matter to us as we are allocating funds. Um, and, and your ability to, to take a vote and say, these are the things that matter to us most, um, is important to me as I prepare the budget for you. It, it, I am committed to you as the council.
So let me ask, um, Councilmember De La Torre. I assumed when he, uh, suggested equity and inclusion as a third item, that when he started talking about economic effort, opportunity for everybody, employment, education, et cetera, that, uh, but when you were talking about economic opportunity, you were considering , uh, economic recovery. Is that right?
Yes, correct. When we, as we recover, our economy recovers, we want to infuse within that equity, inclusion and so forth, right? So that's, it's almost like you can't do any of this without economic recovery.
Uh, Councilmember Davis?
I appreciate the desire to, to limit, um, our priorities and I'm going to be voting against a substitute motion for three reasons. The first one is it doesn't include sustainability. We're in a climate crisis. None of this is going to make any sense if we have 120 degree days and nobody can afford to live on this planet. So I'm, I'm very concerned that for the next two years, we're, and I understand this notion that of course, everything we've always done in the past, we're going to continue to do. But that was one of the reasons, for example, that I really wanted to elevate equity and social justice, because you can say you have an overlay to something and, and I'm not in any way disrespecting staff's efforts to do so. But when we name something as a priority, it's very different than saying it's part of an overlay. So two, that's the, the other thing is, one of the recent things I heard for sustainable, when I proposed sustainability, included a component of economic recovery. And I appreciate Councilmember De La Torre's notion that if we're going to have an economic recovery, it needs to be equitable, but that's still a big if. And I view sustainability, economic recovery is part of a sustainable Santa Monica, which is why I included that fourth category. So I think the lack of a more specific or more emphatic call out to that, um, is troubling to me. And then the third thing I want to say is I really appreciate the efforts on reducing homelessness. I know it is the thing that everybody reacts to and I certainly respect the fact that for our residents in our community, it is a top priority. But the fact of the matter is that while addressing homelessness is key, housing is a civil right. And we have a lot of people in this community who are insecurely housed. They may not be on the immediate cusp of homelessness, but if we don't address these issues, they may in fact be there pretty soon. Um, talking about whether or not it's the eviction cliff we're going to fall out off of when subsidies end and the pandemic is no longer with us, or whether it has to do with economic, um, issues within the city, you know, if housing prices continue to go up, you know, how will our teachers and nurses, you know, the, the people who serve our food, the people who wash dishes in our restaurants, the people who, uh, serve in our hotels be able to live, um, anywhere near this community? So, so for me, while I appreciate homelessness being a focus, and I certainly intended it to be a focus, I think not including other housing issues is a mistake. So I won't be supporting the substitute motion.
I, I just want to clarify one thing. You do know that equity and inclusion is not being included as an overlay, but actually as a separate item now?
Yeah, I under, I understand that. I understand.
Thank you. I just wanted to be sure. Uh, Councilmember, uh, De La Torre and then McCowen and then Brock?
Um, you know, on the, on the issue of sustainability, honestly, I really feel like sustainability is a part of our culture in this city. Uh, I don't see any council members that I know going, going away from that. I think we're very proud of that. It's really part of our culture. It's really ingrained in almost everything we do. We, we are leaders and pioneers in that area and I think we're going to continue, uh, to be doing that. There's other areas that are newer. Um, and I think, uh, some, some, some that we created, you know, we're responsible for, like the lack of equity and inclusion, and some like we didn't create totally, like homelessness, you know? These are things that are newer to our community, to our social condition, uh, but yet we intend to tackle them. And I think, uh, I, I feel really good that we focused. Uh, I like, uh, I like, you know, the three areas I think are very important and I really do agree with sustainability. I just think that not putting it on there doesn't mean that it's not going to happen. Uh, it's going to happen. I mean, guaranteed it's going to happen. By the way, even our micro mobility, there's so many things that we're doing, uh, within other areas of our, of our city that are all in line with our goals for sustainability. And, and I just feel it's part of our culture and it doesn't really need its own separate item at this point. So I like to, I'd like to, I like to support the motion as we have it, uh, moving forward now.
Councilmember McCowen?
So again, this kind of brings me back to my concern with priorities that are too narrow, is we're making a lot of assumptions that it still will just be because it's what we've always been. And if we don't more directly identify and call these things out, I'm concerned that they won't just be, because this is what I foresee happening. And it's, it's happened over the course of my time on council on a few occasions, especially because we're in such a tight budget setting, which is we will bring something, whether it's a 13 item or will want to, you know, and then staff will say, these are your priorities as previously defined, and this is going to be a challenge or that, you know? And so again, I, I just think the substitute motion is almost too narrow. Um, and I would really like to see it broadened a bit. And I, I felt that there was room within the original motion to possibly offer a, a friendly amendment or something and expand it to include the more direct reduction of homeless language that Mayor Himmelrich wanted. But I think this substitute is just way too narrow.
Councilmember Brock?
I, economic recovery, of course, is of utmost concern in our city. Remediating rents for, uh, the businesses on city property that have had problems is of major concern. But if we can remediate... if we can remediate homelessness, if we can reduce homelessness, if we can reduce the aberrant behavior we see in our city, our businesses on the pier, on Main Street, on Ocean Avenue, downtown Santa Monica, on Wilshire, Montana, Ocean Park, and Pico, all are concerned. They all the owners need to re-lease their spaces. The businesses need to recoup their tremendous losses. And when I hear from a restaurant owner on Ocean Avenue, over the last week, they've had six incidents that have led them to have to refund their guests, the money they were going to pay for dinner, and not take it from them. That concerns me. So I'm going to repeat the fact that homelessness and clean and safe neighborhoods and streets are of utmost importance to our economic recovery. You know, sort of the if you were a firefighter, you'd say you rescue the victim, and then you extinguish the fire. It doesn't mean you're going to ignore the fire continuing to spread. So yes, that includes pods, includes housing. But the people in the city, if you take the statistically incorrect survey that was distributed, but they absolutely overwhelmingly, people in this city are concerned about homelessness. And Councilmember Davis, yes, it may be their perception of public safety, but they're concerned about it. So I think we have to answer that. And we need to actually, in this next two years, control and reduce that with more effort. If we spread ourselves too thin right now, two years from now, we'll sit here and we'll say the same thing over and over again. So I will favor Councilmember Mayor Himmelrich's motion, because I really want to see us focus and concentrate. And yes, I believe that will help lead to economic recovery. Thank you.
And no, okay, so seeing no more hands and no more discussion, Denise, may we have a vote on the substitute? Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Are you going to show us the yeah?
Yes. Mayor, could I ask Christopher to show you the language so you know what you're voting on?
Please.
Are you able to see my the screen?
Nope.
Maybe if I hit the share screen button, that'll be the.
That does work. Amazing how instruction. Yeah, there we go.
Oh, I'm sorry. This one here?
What is that? Oh, is that under diversity and inclusion? Is that what that is? And I see it there.
Is this?
Christopher, I think you had the right slide up the first time.
I do, too.
No, this this is the one, counsel, I believe this is, this is just slightly cleaned up language so that they and it includes Councilmember De La Torre's.
Can we make it bigger? Oh, yeah, okay. Ah, now I can even read it. Thank you. So, Lane, does this address your issue about economic recovery, or it doesn't?
This, counsel, this language does not include economic recovery. I did not hear that in the substitute motion.
And I do want to address that concern, because obviously, it's a concern of all of us, as we've expressed. And if we added provide all community, community members with access to economic recovery, educational employment, right, like that, would that then express it for you?
I think, Mayor, I read the equity and inclusion language to be particularly focused on economic resources, to advance equity and inclusion in our economic spheres.
Yes.
Oh, I have I have a quick suggestion. I love the idea of putting economic recovery, equity, and inclusion, because we we won't separate it. We're going to say that as we rebuild, I don't want to go back to the normal. I want to go back to a better society, right? And so that would be aspirational. And it's it's a Santa Monica way to say, we're going to rebuild with equity and inclusion as our as our as our guide. So that other so that every so we can spread the prosperity, right? So add add economic recovery right before equity and inclusion, include it, make it all part of one.
It would be, that's what I wanted to ask. So it would be economic recovery with equity, you know, or how do you want to phrase it? And equity and inclusion? That's two.
Well, how about guided guided by economic recovery guided by equity and inclusion?
Is that friendly to the?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
Then it's friendly to me. And, yes.
May I ask a question? As as I read this language, you are then you have then removed the focus on other equity and inclusion efforts. I think what what I would recommend would be either that you include as a fourth priority, economic opportunity and recovery, which was defined as a local economy that encourages opportunity for all, especially people with the greatest barriers to advancement, unpenned by a sufficiently diverse economy to provide economic stability, or that you not include it as one of your priorities, and accept that in the budget process, you will need enough, you will need economic recovery to be able to fund the other things that you want to do, which would be different than prioritizing it. It would be relying on your professional staff to recognize that link between our ability to provide services to our community and a thriving economy in Santa Monica. But but I do fear that combining these two in the bottom is going to result in some lack of clarity, and I do need clarity from my staff.
No, I understand. I really do understand. Well, the other thing that I find a little troubling is as formulated, Christopher, can you make it a little bigger again?
Oh, sure.
Is that we do have maintaining access to safe, fun, and healthy open spaces, right? In the first one, and I guess that's really addressed at the park. So let me ask the secondor, I am willing to add a third item, a fourth item for economic recovery. Is that friendly to the although? Look, it's essential to do these other things. So I want to know if that's friendly to?
It's friendly. We're just getting almost close to the other motion that was originally proposed. So if we shorten the equity inclusion, like, oh, wait, we went somewhere. What happened? So yes, economic recovery, if you need that separate, then just one simple sentence, I think we're with respect to Lane, it seems like that could be much shorter, without maybe the subtitles, and just economic recovery is a civic priority, must be a civic priority, and just stop there. Would that be okay, Lane?
So what if we said, instead of economic recovery guided by equity and inclusion, an equitable and inclusive economic recovery?
So, counsel, can you give me just one moment? I apologize. We would usually do this right next to each other. Christopher, could you remove economic recovery guided by from the equity and inclusion?
So, Lane, did you hear what I just said, though? I think it may solve it.
I I think that we have that. And Christopher, can you add at the bottom, the one that I just sent to you by email? And then, Mayor, could you restate any changes you want to that last one?
Well, let me look at because I do like the idea of stating as equitable, inclusive economic recovery.
I think that's great language. That's strong language.
I do, too.
Me as well.
Mayor, you wanted to change the last one to create?
I want it to be equitable and inclusive economic opportunity and recovery. I want it because I do think that economic recovery and opportunity is important. It does have to be equitable and inclusive. And and your your description of it says that, right?
Yes. So I think then we would remove the bullet point, the last bullet point, and say cultivate an equitable and inclusive local economy. I'm sorry, Mayor, did I get that right?
I think that's it keeps shifting around. So I keep trying to look at it. So whether you eliminate the third one or the fourth one, they need to be combined into equitable and inclusive economic recovery. And something like that equitable, inclusive economic recovery.
Mayor, what I what I fear you lose there, and I just want to be sure you're doing it intentionally, is is you're losing the the educational piece and the life outcome piece of the prior equity and inclusion outcome.
Well, the way Christopher just did it, I still have that, but you lost whatever your third thing, your fourth thing is. I hate to say it, but the type is small, but the way that he added it, I believe we have, yeah, equitable, inclusive economic recovery. That's why I say, so you but if you wanted to do it in the fourth one, you could say equitable, inclusive economic opportunity and recovery, and that would be a local economy that encourages opportunity for all. Allowing access to educational employment and economic resources and write blah, blah. Just I think you can add in opportunity, you can add educational employment and because the economic opportunity and recovery talks about opportunity for all. Right? And opportunity does include education.
Sorry, Mayor, are you looking for three or four?
I'm looking for three. I want to make equitable, inclusive economic equitable, inclusive economic opportunity and recovery the heading. But we want a local economy that encourages opportunity for all, which includes access to educational employment and economic resources. Yes, that looks good. And then you would take out. Yes. And although that is, I really love the language that was just taken out, where differences in life outcomes cannot be predicted by, can we leave that in? Does that make it too long? I don't think so. Because I really embrace that language. That good with the secondor?
Yes.
And and Lane, is this good with you?
Yes, I think that, yes, I understand what this means. And I think that I think my staff will as well.
Great. So do we have any comments on this iteration?
I have my hand up when you get to the point.
I can't see any. Right. Okay. So, thank you. Councilmember McCowen?
And just because I want to see the language starts to go there. So I, again, I'm just going to reiterate some of my concerns. We are going to have a new city manager, one that may not have the institutional knowledge and background that our current interim city manager has. I'm concerned that if we too greatly narrow our priorities and their descriptions, we will find ourselves in some very uncomfortable meeting situations in the future. Additionally, with regard to this addressing homelessness pair description, I think, address the behavioral needs of vulnerable residents is way too narrow. I think that should, if you're going to use something like that, has to be a vulnerable homeless, not residents specifically, because not all of our homeless people are technically defined as residents. So I'm concerned we would be potentially leaving people out. I think this having this maintain access to safe, fun, and healthy open spaces in the addressing homelessness part is very confusing, because one could argue that, yes, they deserve access to safe, fun, and healthy open spaces, which I don't think is exactly what folks are trying to get at. For those that have differing views than myself on how we view our homeless populations, I think this equitable and inclusive is now not an overarching part of our values or beliefs across all of our priorities, and is now consolidated to one area. So I am just saying this to make it very abundantly clear, again, why I cannot support this substitute motion as currently drafted.
Thank you. I just want to note that the maintain access to safe, fun, and healthy open spaces was one of the four pillars we passed at two meetings ago. So I think it's time. Does I can't tell if anyone else has anything to say. So speak up. Oscar, I sort of, is that Oscar?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I do. I do think that just that that change, Councilwoman McCowen brought up the change of vulnerable residents, we should probably change it to vulnerable people, you know, to make it super broad, right? Because that could include every anyone, residents or or non-residents. And I think with that, I think everything else, everything works, everything else works. I mean, both homeless and non-homeless deserve the right to safe, fun, and healthy open spaces. I mean, there's no problem. I, me personally, with people that are homeless, it's the issues of enforcement and all that had to do with more behavior. But in any case, that's not really specifically.
So vulnerable individuals, is that, does that work?
Yeah, vulnerable individual. Yeah, I think that'll clarify that.
I accept that.
Counsel, if you're going to consider a change there, I think Councilmember McCowen also was pointing out that this should maybe say unsheltered individuals?
Aye.
And I will point out, you could you could omit the fourth pillar if you want to, because it's encapsulated in clean and safe Santa Monica. That is also the kind of cleanup that we can do with you at a later at a later date. That, that is also the kind of cleanup that we can do with you at a later, at a later date.
And just so we're clear, that's part of the reason I was bringing it up. It is redundant in a way that it comes across as being directed toward a population that I'm uncomfortable with it being directed toward. I understand that it's one of the four pillars, but that's why it's enumerated in its own bullet point. So that was the point I clearly made inarticulately.
So I think we can take out the safe, fun, and healthy open spaces since we have it in the next, right? It's the same. Phil, is that acceptable?
Absolutely, because it is absolutely redundant.
It is redundant. Good, I can live with that.
Counsel, I'm being told that the changes to behavioral health may actually impact our work. Andy, would you like to step in on that front?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So when, when we envision providing behavioral health support, we envision something that would be for people experiencing homelessness, but there could also be other members of the community that are experiencing behavioral health crisis, and that they would be served. So, so my recommendation is, is to not specifically say unsheltered, so that it could provide broader community support.
Yes, and, and as we're aware from our recent history, we've had people who were sheltered, who had mental health crises and became unsheltered. So it, it, I understand what you're saying. It could be either.
Exactly.
Phil?
I'm fine. I'm fine. I, I accept.
Oscar? Okay, so that's fine, Andy. Thank you for that suggestion, and you're right about that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm not seeing any more comments. Shall we take a vote first on the substitute motion? Councilmember De La Torre?
This is the substitute motion, right? The language I'm looking at?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Brock?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim McCowen?
No.
Councilmember McKeown?
No.
Councilmember Davis?
No.
Councilmember Parra?
Yes.
And Mayor Himmelrich? Yes, and so that motion passes four to three, made by Himmelrich, seconded by Brock.
Mayor, I know you can't see me, but I'd like to be heard, if I may.
Sure.
For the mayor and the city clerk, I'd like the record to show that my no vote reflects not what's in the motion, which I support, but rather what's not in the motion, and that I'm deeply troubled by removing affordability. I think that diminished focus puts our existing residents, many of them, at risk of losing their economic quality of life, if not actually being evicted. And I'm appalled that this ignores the existential crisis of all time, climate change, by reducing our commitment to sustainability. I do not believe the actions we need to take to save our city and our planet are going to just happen.
Councilmember McCowen?
And I'd like to say that my no vote for the substitute motion was because I believed that we so narrowly defined our priorities, that we excluded things that I believe are critically important. We did not explicitly lay them out in a way that I believe we should have, particularly in the areas of affordability and sustainability.
Councilmember Davis?
And I'd like the record to reflect that my no vote was based on similar reasoning as Councilmember McKeown and Mayor Pro Tim McCowen. And additionally, quite honestly, that I think tying our efforts in terms of equity completely and exclusively to economic recovery is inappropriate, that social justice is a broader topic, and there may be a lot of things that we need to do to address the effects of intentional racism in the history of our country, as well as the history of our community, that don't have anything to do with economic recovery, but have to do with creating a socially just community. And I think also, as, in addition to what was mentioned by Councilmember McKeown and Mayor Pro Tim McCowen, I think not including those in these days and times is, is inappropriate.
Councilmember De La Torre?
Yes, I just want to express why I'm supporting this motion, because it focuses on the two.
Mayor, 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 I'm sorry, could we follow the council rules? Those who won on the motion already had the chance to explain why they voted for it before they voted for it. Council rules specifically allow only those who are on the losing side of a motion to put their thinking on the record, and I appreciate our following the council rules.
And Oscar, that is correct, so I'm sorry. But we had plenty of discussion. So, so the motion. Thank you. So the motion having passed and the vote being taken, I believe there's nothing more to do in this meeting. Is that correct, city manager?
That is correct, counsel.
Then I will adjourn this meeting, and our next meeting is March 23rd, 2021, at the usual time, we hope, 5:30. Thank you. The meeting is adjourned.